So, um. Are people comfortable if we get started and then, yeah, okay. Angela's good, all right. So, the agenda, I'm sorry? This is a work session, so there's, it's an opportunity to, prior to the vote and the full vetting, it's an opportunity for us to hear from organizations. There are four who have, it's a real interesting mix tonight because there's a, two applicants, one applicant to open a new school, a charter school, another applicant to expand from their, they have one charter school, they want to open a second one. A second school wants to add a grade band. A third one wants to convert from a new school, which is an old designation. For those of us who have been around a long time and actually know what that means, they want to convert to a charter and expand. And then there's another request to change operatives. I don't think I've ever seen this crazy quilt of a mix this time of the year. So, it's sort of, it would be interesting. So, the way we're going to do it is we're going to have Ms. Alvarez and her, are you going to do this, or Trevor's going to, just you, Angela? Okay. Ms. Alvarez is going to, and Mr. Roberts are going to make a few opening introduction about what we're going to hear. And then we're going to invite each applicant to speak to the board for four minutes. Following the applicant's remarks, the board will have an opportunity to ask them questions. And that sound good to everybody? I'm looking at you, Jane. You got a big ol' nod from Jane, so I'm good on, I'm good. If Jane says we're good, we're good. So Angela and Trevor, you're up.
So again, I'm Angela Alvarez. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of New Initiatives.
And I'm Trevor Roberts. I'm a specialist in the Office of New Initiatives.
I think they're pulling up our presentations. I'm just going to pause. Thank you. And we're going to be very quick because we want all the time to be for the applicants. So, schools, potential schools or existing schools who are looking to do something different, submitted applications to us in March. These have been reviewed by our new and operator-led Schools Advisory Board, who is advisory to the CEO. And tonight is an opportunity for the applicants to speak directly to the board and take questions from the board regarding their applications. The board will make their final, the CEO will make official recommendations on June 11th, and the board will make their final decision on June 11th, based on everything that's on the record. As Commissioner Krishani shared, we have kind of two sets, so they're bifurcated into two parts. So, we have two applicants who are proposing to bring something new to the district. So, you'll be hearing from those two applicants tonight. And then we have two existing schools that are seeking to change their governance structure. So, they exist, they're already operating, and it's more about a governance change. So, that's kind of the division of the two types of requests that are in this package this year. I'm going to turn over to Trevor to talk about, just a little bit about the first applicant, and then we're going to bring them up.
So, the first applicant is Patterson Park Public Charter School Incorporated. They are applying to replicate Patterson Park Public Charter School. They, that would be a K through eight school with enrollment at capacity of 540 students located in the Bayview community.
I think that's good. The other thing is, we've shared with the applicants, the current thinking around strengths and weaknesses of the application, so they're aware of that. That's a change we made based on feedback we got from the State Board in terms of the process, so that everybody's fully aware of the strengths and weaknesses in their applications when they're coming before you. So, I wanted that to be on the record as well.
All right. And so.
That's helpful.
Further delay. So, we're going to do them in the order that they're listed here on the page. So, first up is Clay Hill Public Charter School. Is that like a street or something? Is Clay Hill a street?
It's a monster.
Can you tell you the story of the name?
Well, you don't want to take up your four minutes, so. There you go. Don't use any of your four minutes to answer that question. I will ask that question.
Okay. That may take almost the full four minutes. So, good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for taking the time to hear from us tonight. My name is Jane Linenfelsar. I'm the Executive Director of Patterson Park Public Charter School Incorporated. And I'm joined this evening by a team of staff members, board members, parents, founders, and community members to ask for your support and approval of our application to open Clay Hill Public Charter School. We have members of our school community who are here today to speak to each part of the application, but we really wanted to spend our four minutes going a little bit more in-depth on who we are, how we got to this point, the need we see, and then more specifically, our academic programming. So, we're going to spend more of our talking time on that. You do have in front of you a suite of decks that kind of gives you an overview as well as a couple handouts, so feel free to reference those as well. So, Patterson Park Public Charter School Incorporated and Clay Hill Public Charter School will operate under the same vision of lifelong learners, healthy families, and strong neighborhoods. And our mission is to provide a community-centered learning environment that values diversity and embraces a whole-child approach to develop well-educated citizens. So, why Clay Hill? We began exploring the possibility of replication about three years ago. At the time, we learned that southeast Baltimore was facing overcrowding and a significant seat deficit. There's now even more growth in the housing developments in our area, and the percentage of households with children under 18 is 34%, which is 18% higher than the city average. Southeast Baltimore, as you know, is also very diverse, with a growing population of immigrant students of Latino descent. The southeast CDC noted that 60% of the district's immigrant population attends schools in southeast Baltimore, and the facilities master plan noted that the Latino-Hispanic community is the largest group among English-language learners, and an increase in this population has had an impact on enrollment in city schools. So, we're confident that Clay Hill Public Charter School has a strong understanding of and ability to meet the needs of a diverse student population with a growing representation of immigrant families.
My name is Maurice Moshe. I'm the Family Engagement Coordinator at PPPCS. And as a person who manages enrollment, I can say that the seats needed in southeast Baltimore are demonstrated by the increasing amount of applications that we receive each year. For the 2019-20 school year, we received over 600 applications for only 96 guaranteed seats, which equates to a little over six applicants for every one seat that we have available. And as we get to know these families and our neighbors, as I am a resident of Bayview, of why that they choose to apply to our school, the reason that they apply sometimes year after year is because of the culture and climate that our school creates, which leads to their students' academic success, which can be represented by our four-star school rating and our park scores, which are above the district average across all subjects and grades.
Good evening. My name is Emily Augustin. I'm the current Assistant Principal at Patterson Park Public Charter School. Using the best practices we've learned and refined at PPPCS, Clay Hill Public Charter School will also take a whole-child approach to educating our students. What this looks like is that we challenge every child in their academic development. We enhance their physical, mental, social, and emotional health. We provide love and support to our children. We nurture skills and values for personal growth, and we also encourage the self-development and identity development of every child. This approach is research-based and aligns with the district's blueprint focused on student wholeness, but even extends the definition further to focus on the whole environment while cultivating in our schools. Additionally, Clay Hill Public Charter School is committed to diversity, equity, and inclusivity. In this spirit, we've developed a five-year plan to ensure equitable practices and outcomes for all students. And though we still see equity gaps in our academic data, the data also shows that every subgroup at PPPCS scored better than the comparable subgroups within city schools, and gaps in performance shrink for Patterson Park students as they progressed into middle school. I'll pass it off to my colleagues. We'll speak a little bit on how we address our learners.
Just to note the time.
Hi, my name is Deborah Fajube, and I am the second-grade teacher at Patterson Park. As a school that prioritizes a whole-child approach and recognizes that we serve a diverse student population, we will use strategic data points to inform our instruction. We will use measured data such as the Renaissance Star Math 360 test, the Naglari test, and the M-class literacy test to address the learning needs of our students and minimize those achievement gaps.
Good evening. I'm Bess Haquilla, a special educator at PPPCS. Our cluster grouping and scheduling allow us to prioritize inclusion and provide push-in services which supplement differentiation inside the classroom. Our best practices include curriculum design with embedded flexible small-group instruction and guided reading sessions which benefit our students with disabilities and English-language learners.
I'm going to have to ask you, because I need to be fair.
Certainly.
People were fussing at me lately.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, seriously. This is not, don't take it personally.
If it were after her, she'd let you go in that.
Yeah, I'm really, this is not a strength of mine. I do want to, now I do want to open up, thank you.
Certainly.
Very, very helpful. I want to open up for questions. We'll start with Commissioner Frank.
I could say my question was, what were you about to say, but I won't do that. You talked about the number of applicants and available slots. What's the size of the waiting list?
So, each grade has its own waiting list. For example, in pre-K, we have 46 guaranteed seats. Our waiting list is at 167. Kindergarten's similar, and then, like I said, each grade has their own. So, first grade might be at like 30, and it changes with the grade.
It's a citywide lottery, correct?
Correct.
And that's what you're proposing for the new school?
Correct.
Okay.
But with a weighted enrollment zone.
Okay. And then, what was my last question? Oh, my last question is, do you know anecdotally, anecdotally or more rigorous data, anything about your waiting list? Who they are, where they go, when they don't get into your school? Are they staying in the school district? Do you know any of that from?
We don't track where they go if they don't get into our school. We do usually track, like, if students leave our school, where do they go? Because that's information we have when we send their transfer packets. But for students who are never called off the waitlist, we don't have, like, a where did they end up?
We also do collect data as far as where, if they are already attending a city school, what school they're transferring in from, if they have previous experience, like, maybe it's a Head Start or another pre-K. And we do also check the zip code that they're applying from.
So, do you have a sense of, I would imagine most of the kids are coming from a district school? Or am I, should I not assume that?
Yes.
Yes, you are. Okay. Thanks.
I just have a couple questions. While you were presenting, I, I started, I picked through a little bit of the material, and there's a chart, the stapled piece of, stapled document. It's the chart that says commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusivity. I just, I'm not understanding something. I get what it means when there's an X. So, cluster grouping is for all those different populations. I'm not as clear about what's happening when there's not an X. So, for, for example, classroom environment, there's a classroom environment for students with disabilities, and there's a classroom environment for English-language learners, and there's a classroom environment for students below grade level. But there's not a classroom environment for gifted and talented? I just don't know what that means.
Yeah. As we were making this, so this was part of our, like, additional questions or additional responses to our application and our interview. What we were trying to do was just give you a sense of the breadth of strategies that we use within the school to address our different learning populations. It's not to say that the classroom environment doesn't support those specific learners. It's just that things like, like, maybe Ms. Augustine can, or even Bess can speak a little bit to, like, how that works with.
So, the classroom environment we were trying to get at is that we reach early learners and ELL students by having picture-rich environments. And so, within that pre-K to second-grade band, everything that our teachers are doing are also cued with pictures. And so, that the classroom environment has those pictures available for students to access, and then they're also accessing that language from their teachers.
I think I just want to make sure I was understanding it so that when I review the material, I'm not like, what is this? And is there a nickel version of the why, what is Clay Hill? Not the seminar version.
Yeah.
Seminar.
The name of the school is actually really hard, and we went through a lot of different options. The obvious choice was Bayview Public Charter School or the initial one, but it reminded so many people the hospital. The ideal facility is located in Joseph Lee Park or next to Joseph Lee Park, so we thought a lot about Joseph Lee Public Charter School. Unfortunately, Joseph Lee, while he was the founder of the modern-day playground movement, was also an officer in the Immigration Reform Service, was an anti-immigration movement. So, we didn't want to name our school after that. And so, then we dug in and we did a little bit more research, and I actually had a conversation with a former delegate, Carolyn Chrissieak, and she said, you know, the kids used to call that hill that Bayview's on Clay Hill. And the more we thought about it, it just kind of resonated because we were like, it's a name that kids knew. It's also, obviously, has a nod to nature and green space, and using the green space is a big part of who we are as a school. But there's also this element of, you know, what do you do with clay? You mold and you build things with clay. And so, we want to give our kids an experience that will mold and build their future. So, that's how we came up with the name.
That's awesome. Nobody will get mad. I'm sorry. It's true. The other one would have led you down a whole different path. Commissioner Reed?
You talked about diversity. What's your diversity look like in terms of your teaching and your leadership group?
I could take that case. So, in terms of our teaching staff, I don't know that I necessarily have the percentages on that. In terms of our leadership, to be quite frank, our leadership right now at the school administration level is not as diverse as we would like it to be. It's not representative of our student body population. At the board level, we've actually become much more diverse in recent years. I don't have the percentages on that, although I could, like, quickly do a bit of numbers. Yeah. One, I would say, one kind of area or gap we've really been looking to fill for some time in terms of representation on our board is somebody who identifies as Latino-Hispanic. And we've had a really challenging time bringing that voice to the table. We have other ways to make sure that our parents' voices and our community voices are represented, but having that voice represented at the, at board engagement level has been challenging.
Because you said you want to provide, you value diversity, embrace the whole child. But I'd like to see if you could, in the future, try to come up with some, your diversity plan?
Yeah.
It seems like you need some work.
Well, actually, we do have a diversity plan. So, that's the, one of the handouts that you have, and it's great that you sort of mentioned that piece because it really did stem from a staffing issue. So, our work in this capacity started before my tenure, really, when our board created a diversity, equity, and inclusivity statement. And then from there, we created a staff committee that was focused on living up to that statement. They realized very quickly that we needed more help. We needed to really take this on, and we didn't actually have the expertise and the capacity within our staff to lead us forward. And so, we worked with the generous support of the Gold Sucker Foundation, Baltimore Community Foundation. We worked with Associated Black Charities all of last year. There was a two-part engagement. One part of it was direct professional development with our whole team and our board and parents around bias and implicit bias and how that plays out in our actions. And then the other piece of the work was creating a work plan. And so, that's the chart that's highlighted there, and then you also have kind of a one-page overview. And so, to your point, it impacts every piece of our work. So, there's a priority in there around staffing. And last year, I believe we hired eight staff members at school, which is kind of strange for us. We usually don't have many vacancies, but 50% of them identified as people of color in our new hiring pool. So, this past year, staffing was a priority, and then professional development around an equity lens and sort of our disciplinary practices was our priority.
Commissioner Chinia?
Yeah, you made a mention about having an identified achievement gap. Can you talk a little bit more about, you know, what area does that fall in? And you said that it tends to get smaller as you move up. So, what are some of those strategies you learn that you plan to take to the, to Clay Hill?
Yeah. I'm actually going to have, so as I mentioned, there are additional folks who are able to answer specific questions to our application. We just, in the interest of four minutes, didn't quite want everybody to speak. So, if it's okay, I'd love for Ms. Augustine and Dr. Kramer to sort of address those questions.
Yes, that's fine. Yeah. Sure.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chad Kramer. I'm a principal at the school. I'm also a parent, and really a proud founder of this Clay Hill movement over here. I, I think in that diversity, equity, inclusivity plan, if you take a look at that, you'll see some, some strategies that are specific to trying to address the gaps that we see at our school as well as we see nationwide. You also are, have access to a data set that compares the growth of our students versus the growth of other students in those subgroups across the rest of the city, which is what we use not just to compare ourselves to the rest of the city, but also to go see what other great strategies are happening at other schools. We send our staff over to those other schools, and frankly, we steal their ideas as much as possible. We want to make sure that if somebody's doing some good work out there someplace else, that our staff have access to that, and we try to replicate that as much as possible.
Yeah. I mean, I can talk a little bit about our internal process, too. It's a data cycle that we look at to evaluate our data. Dr. Kramer spoke a little bit about that Maryland Report Card data that we look at, but even on a micro level, we're reviewing data on a regular basis. Ms. Fajube spoke about STAR 360, M-class, classroom formative and summative assessments we're using constantly, sharing this information with stakeholders, developing those, that one, developing those action plans of next steps, and then continuing to revisit that data and put in place a bunch of those interventions that Ms. Haquilla started to mention. And we talk about the way that the classroom environment responds to different subgroups of students, different interventions like ABC Crew, which works with sight words and phonics learning for our early learners. We have an intervention called Hero Lab in our third through eighth grade, so we target certain population of students to have additional help around homework and reading and organizational skills. So, we have a variety of interventions that we've used at our current site to respond to the trends we see in data that we've seen some success with, that we look to replicate.
And could you guys maybe speak a little bit to, like, the equitable classroom practices that we've been using this year and how that's.
Sure. Want to talk about that, please?
Yeah. So, we've used a tool, the Equitable Classroom Practices Tool, and it's about 27 data points. And we use our equity lens in everything we do, in our response to students, and also when we take a look at our curriculum, how we're interacting with our students, our grouping with our students. And we make sure that, I began to talk about our cluster grouping, and so both focusing on our heterogeneous grouping and our homogenous grouping, and we're making sure that our students are constantly learning from each other and not just from our teacher, but also that the teacher is directing that through that equity lens.
Other questions, comments? Commissioner Hassan?
Thank you very much for your presentation and your work putting this proposal together. One of the big advantages of charter schools or the big benefits to a system as part of our portfolio is that you have the opportunity to incubate changes and initiate pieces, and then the responsibility of disseminating that information. So, to that end, I'm wondering if you would consider a conversion instead of a charter? So, coming into an already-established elementary school, middle school that may need some support, some extra love, and applying the expertise that you've gained at your great little school in Patterson Park?
Yeah, that's a great question, and actually, we did consider that. So, back when we started on this journey, and maybe I can ask Sarah and Chad to expand on this a little bit, we were pretty open. We knew that we, felt like we had the capacity to do more and a desire to do more, but we were pretty open about what that looked like. And so, I'll maybe let them speak a little bit more to what we looked into and the options we explored and that sort of thing.
Can I lift this up? Hi, my name is Sarah Sandoval-Moapatra. I'm the President for the Board of Directors at Patterson Park Public Charter School. About, I guess, three years ago, we started looking at what was next for us as a school, and we really thought it was time to expand. And we were very open to lots of different ways. We just knew we wanted to fill a need in the city, meet the demands of families who weren't getting into our school. So, we looked at expansion within our current building. We're very limited on space, so that wasn't necessarily feasible. And replication and conversion. And I think, you know, there's a lot of things to consider, but one of the things that came to mind was what is financially feasible for us long-term? And so, making sure that, you know, we can both fill a school enrollment-wise, but also make sure that we can stay afloat financially. And I think that was part of the, you know, consideration. Dr. Kramer, do you want to add more?
Sure.
I mean, I think the other reality is that what we're seeing is that within the city, we have growth areas. In the southeast, we see a growth area. We see a growth area serving our students who are coming from immigrant families. And at Patterson Park, we've been serving those populations, and we see the opportunity to be able to create more seats, to be able to keep students within Baltimore City's public schools. And that really drove us to consider the new site as well.
So, that's, that's wonderful. In reflection, how would you, would you entertain if this board came back and said, hmm, not a charter, but a conversion? Would that conversation continue, or would that be a period for you?
Yeah, I think it would definitely continue. I mean, we had a conversation with Dr. Santelisus, I believe, in October, where we shared three options that we were considering. Two of them were conversion and one was a new site. And we talked about kind of our biggest questions with each of those options, and how could we match sort of what we were seeing as our greatest strengths with what we thought we were uncovering in research with the district's greatest need? And so, that's kind of why we landed on the new school, because of this seat deficit piece, because of the growing population. Some of the other options that we were looking into in terms of, like, viable partners, I mean, I will say this, we do have a preference for staying in the southeast. That is where we started, and, you know, we feel like that is the community that we call home. So, we actually did even explore some conversion sites outside of the southeast, but kind of came back with our board and said, this is really, our commitment is in this neck of the city. So, amending what I just said, I think, yes, we probably would if it were a conversion option in the southeast.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, we're good. Thanks for taking the time.
The next group that we're going to have come up is Green Street Academy. They're existing 612 located in West Baltimore. What they're applying to do is add elementary grades to become a school that serves students in grades K through 12. And so, I'm going to have them come up to the table.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. Thank you for having us this morning, this afternoon. We are excited to share about our expansion plan for the elementary school. Green Street Academy has been a charter school since 2010. We're excited about the progress that we've made thus far. We believe that adding a elementary school component to the school will enhance the school's community. We believe that it will also help us as we work to ensure that our kids understand what college and career readiness is before sixth grade. So, we're really excited about that. For our elementary plan, we have three main pillars. The first pillar is the GSA Literacy Lab, where we're working to get our high school kids to join the TAM program, the Teacher Academy of Maryland, and come and work in our elementary school to see what the teaching experience is like, which is a CTE program through the state of Maryland. We're also excited to add a social-emotional learning center that will incorporate mindfulness, Tai Chi, as well as meditation for our lower grades. And last but not least, we want to focus on sustainability through career exploration as well as getting kids to understand options for their community, to make their communities better. Beside me, I have Mr. Smith, I have Dr. Myers, and our principal, Mr. Gordon.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Khalid Smith. I, I really come, I'm on the board of Green Street, and I come at the situation from, I'm a founder of a teacher education company, and we have looked at social-emotional learning in terms of the, the growth that Green Street has had and building upon it, and its focus on workforce development, and really the, how we can integrate that into the TAM program, and really looking at why social-emotional learning is the foundation for growth and good, the prerequisites of going into a teacher education program. Why knowledge of self and your ability to manage self, knowledge of other relationships, and your ability to manage your, those other relationships cause you to make good decisions, and then are the building blocks of all of the cultural, cultural proficiency. to make good decisions, and then are the building blocks of all of the cultural proficiency skills, et cetera, that are of good educators. So, we have spent time building each of those into the curriculum and ensuring that the expansion plans for the elementary school are consistent with the goals and the achievements of the programs already.
Hello, my name is, excuse me, Dr. Damian Myers. I'm the COO of Project Numa. We serve typically boys in grades four through eight, but now, we've had several pilot programs. We've included girls as well. This presents a unique opportunity. I echo what's been stated previously, but typically, when students come on our radar, it's very reactionary in nature. They've already experienced troubles through school, already have exhibited disruptive behavior, but I think this gives us the chance to really be proactive in our approach and reach young people before they start making sometimes critical mistakes. And we can start helping them with their social-emotional learning and maturity before they get to middle and high school, where their challenges of life starts appearing. Many of our students, unfortunately, experience a lot of trauma in neighborhoods and at home. I think that we'd be uniquely positioned to identify those challenges early and actually do something about them. We're excited about the opportunity to be in-house and actually have a dedicated office space within the new elementary school, and work with not just the students, but teachers, school officials, and the local community, parents, in terms of really, really channeling the energy and towards a positive direction, helping with the social learning and maturity of the students, and not just being reactionary in nature. So, I think this is something that hopefully could spread, not just through Green Street, but through the district as a whole.
Good evening. I'm Tim Gordon, the principal of Green Street Academy. One of the questions that Ms. Alvarez had given us was talking about the idea of distributive leadership and how we were going to be able to absorb, taking on an entire elementary school. Distributive leadership is something that's been built into the Green Street way and what we call it. I'll give you an example in the past where, when I became an assistant principal at Green Street in 2014, I was given the opportunity to grow a high school. I was given parameters and said, "Go, it's yours." At that point, then, I had check-ins, but then I was responsible for it. I owned it, good, bad, or ugly. I had to own those things. We've taken that now into the teacher model, where now, we have our PDs for the teachers, by the teachers, is how we put it, where our teachers develop professional development around their needs that they see, based on our informal evaluations and our formal evaluations, but we give them feedback, and then we have experts in the room that actually develop professional development within our own community. We also focus on, we have five teachers, oh, am I good? Sure. So, another example we have is we've been trying to groom people to get ready for this expansion, if we're granted the opportunity, is we have five people currently working on their administrative warrant certificates. So, each one of those people now, in their mentor role, has taken on different projects for us. So, one example of this was our new teacher institute. The vision for that was, we talk about differentiation for our students all the time, but we don't always practice it in our professional development. So, the idea was, we're going to create a first, second, and third-year track. This teacher then took that vision and made individual learning plans for every single teacher that's first through third year in the building. So, the idea of just developing that, and she owned it, and she went forward to it.
Great. I want to open this up for questions. Thank you, gentlemen, and ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to start with Commissioner Hassan, then Commissioner Chinia.
Thank you all for your presentation, your proposal, and thank you also for hosting me last week, week before, when I came out. Great visit. My question to you is the same question I had for Patterson Park Public Charter. You've got great things happening. You're doing amazing work. As you go to look to replicate, would you consider replicating as a conversion rather than as an independent charter? I know your facility spaces are a little different than what they've got going on, and that you have room. They don't. But I'd still like to hear whether you'd consider being a conversion.
We would consider. It would be something we would take back to the Board of Directors. We were really excited about trying to have the kids all in one space to have this TAM program, where kids could actually start to train to be educators. I feel like that's a void in our district, and we've started to let our kids, our older kids, kind of do some of that work in elementary schools in our area, but that is kind of coming to the schools are moving, schools are moving farther away, and schools are closing. So, we wanted to make sure that we could provide that opportunity right within our building, especially because we have the space, and we have teachers that are on board to help implement that program. We also went and got a partnership, been working with Morgan State University around the teacher preparation program. So, we felt it could be really essential that, if it was in the building. But it's not something that we would say absolutely not. It would be a decision that we would take back to the board.
Commissioner Chinia?
Yeah, I want to follow up with the TAM program, and I, thank you for going into that one, and I understand about the partnership. Will this be an official CTE program, and if so, what's the timeline for it to be approved, so, you know, so that students are really in a program that will lead to a complete? I think it's a great idea, being a person that came through the time when we had things like future teachers and the opportunity to think about teaching before you ever left school.
Yes, ma'am. I went and met with the director of CTE, maybe in August or September, at the very beginning of this year, to see the process, and took that information back to the Elementary School Advisory Board, when we were just thinking of ideas and trying to figure out what would make our programming stand out. And so, we were told that this is something that could happen, and that it's something that we would just need to basically sign and go through the process. But we don't have many TAM programs in Baltimore City, so it may not be, it may be something that's really encouraged. And so, we did that step very, very early on, printed the documentation, and reviewed it with the Board of Directors.
Okay, but there's a possibility that you may be into a year or two of your program before that actually officially begins, or are you expecting to have that ready to go when you, if you should initiate?
Yes, ma'am. If we're approved, we could have it up and going within a year, is what I was told by the director of CTE.
So, I want to follow up on the TAM program. Does it already exist in the high school?
No, ma'am. It's something that we would like to build in, and something that we went out to kind of figure out what teacher education programs are doing in the local universities, and figure out what was the disconnect. If student teachers couldn't get to elementary school, like what was the disconnect there? And so, it's happening, when I met with the CTE director, he told me that that program was in place at Western, and Western being an all-girls school, my first thought was that, well, if they're young men, young black men, who wanted access to that program in high school, they wouldn't have that option. So, that's what made us kind of go forward with putting together the proposal and really figuring out how we could get that program into Green Street, and we have the space available.
My second question has to do with Project Numa. So, you mentioned that, first of all, it's great to see you included in this proposal. That's terrific. You mentioned that you, I think you said you have a pilot for girls. So, I haven't read the full everything yet, so I'm really just going off of what I'm learning tonight. So, you have a pilot already. Speak to me about the, how you'll do it at Green Street. Will it be fully, will both boys and girls have an opportunity to participate in it?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So, through the University of Maryland Community Engagement Center and James McHenry Elementary Middle School, we partnered with them for 25, about 25 students came out, but it was only for, I believe, maybe eight to 10 sessions. It was a pilot program. Out of the 25 student semitimes were girls. So, it was an opportunity for us to really learn about our programming, how girls could fit in, what their specific needs were, if they were any different. So, we were able to really make an impact. And what we found is that, you know, just in my background, when I went into education and left clinical medicine, I wanted to educate and really, really focus on boys. I ended up through Baltimore City, teaching residency, going to Western High School, and they assured me that-
Good job. Very self-directed.
They assured me that there would be a role for me, and they really stressed the importance of positive black males in the lives of these young girls. I was at Western for about six and a half years, and I can tell you that it's the best thing that ever happened. When we went through this program with girls, we saw a need that in many instances exceeded the needs of the boys that we deal with. There's a real need, and I think if you look at some of the data and some of the challenges that young, especially African-American girls in Baltimore City are facing, it's almost imperative that we expand our programming to include girls. We do run a summer biomedical program. This year is fully funded through Summer Funding Collaborative, and in the summer program, there's more girls than boys, actually. Actually, we're clamoring to get more boys into the summer program. So, we do have experience working with young women. The challenges are similar, but I think the reaction is a little bit different. And we do have females on staff that kind of take the leap when we're working with girls, to make sure that we're addressing their specific needs appropriately.
That's very helpful. Yeah, very helpful. My final question, and I'm not sure to whom I want to direct this, or, now I'm looking at you, Larry, maybe it's you. Why do you want to do this? Like, you've really nailed the high school thing, middle high school, you know, like, good job.
Thank you.
Well, our support of that is evidenced by five-year renewals. Like, that doesn't, that's not an easy lift. So, why? This is like a completely different beast. We love our little kids, right, but they're different than middle school kids. Like, it's just a different deal.
So, I'm Larry Rivitz, for those of you who don't know. Co-founder of this school, have had a 10-year experience with the concept, which actually started up here. So, long association with it. It's been an incredible opportunity. The reason why we were 612 was it was a Dr. Alonso initiative to start a transformation school, which was a 612. We, the idea that we had in the beginning was to do a K-8, but we were told by O and I at the time that there were enough seats, K-8, but what we needed was a 612 learning-to-work school, middle high school. So, that was the process that we took. So, it wasn't necessarily a choice, because we really, when we started, the idea was we would start in West Baltimore, in and around the Center for Urban Families Monroe Street, and work with those families. So, it didn't work out that way. But I would say the genesis of the idea was really, you know, pre-K-5. So, here we are. Thank you very much for the compliment, and we have worked hard, and we've built a culture, and we've built an incredible staff, in my view. We've dealt with the issue of promoting from within, training from within. We have principals who trained with us as teachers, who are now principals in Baltimore City. We have teachers who are lead teachers in other schools who left us to do that. We're happy to do that. It's been great for our culture. So, I would say that, why are we doing this? Because we've invested $21.5 million in a 140,000-square-foot building. We have built a culture, a very family-friendly culture, where we have families who come to us knowing full well that we started at six, and ask us if we can push down to be able to include their younger children in the culture. So, I think they've seen what we've done in terms of pushing students out to college and career. This year, for example, we have 300, we've had 300 students in paid internships this year that emanate from Green Street. And so, the families see that, and they like, in my view, they, in my experience, that they would like a full pre-K-12 experience. So, and clearly, we would be the first in the city to be able to offer that.
That's very helpful. Are you teeing up to ask a question?
Yeah.
I saw you move towards the, Commissioner Reed?
Hey, Larry.
Hi.
I guess in terms of your population demographic, how many walk to the school from, because they're now in 6 to 12? How many can walk or get there readily to the school, and how will that dynamic change if you do K to five?
Seventy-eight percent of our scholars walk to school. So, I think that dynamic will probably increase, because the kids are younger and they all live in the community. We also, this year, did a survey with our families to see how many parents would enroll their kids in the elementary school, so just, not just going on hearsay. And we had 302 parents that said, "Please hurry up and enroll your kids. Figure out what you're going to do to get this elementary school up and running," which then became a part of our Elementary School Advisory Board, where we created a whole separate board, so that the neighborhood, both neighborhood presidents on both sides of our school come to those meetings. They're a part of the conversation, and I believe that the number of kids that walk would increase with younger children.
And where would they come from? Schools?
So, they come from surrounding schools. A lot of the, what we found was, a lot of the younger kids were going to other schools, because the schools were closing. So, I guess in the community, schools were closing. And also, we had plenty of elementary school parents coming to our school to see if they could get bus passes, that we could not give them anyway, because kids are catching buses, little kids are trying to catch buses places. And I think that the K-5 being in the elementary, being in the same building, provides parents with convenience, where they don't have to worry about taking one kid one place, or kids catching the bus, that they could actually bring them to the school. And they come all the time anyway, for our monthly parent nights, so that the kids feel like they're already a part of the community. I think this will be an extension where they could also become educated in our building as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Commissioner McFadden?
The programming plan is a nice one, but I don't see anything that speaks to the co-curricular arts programming for the preschool grades, I mean, the elementary grades. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, we, I didn't bring the actual schedule. I put it as a part of the proposal, but the kids will also do initiatives that are directly linked to the arts. Right now, in our middle school, we have art therapy as a part of the programming. We have music. We have choir, instrumental music. We have choir. We would just link those same resources to our lower grades. We have teachers, 82% of teachers in our building have prior experience with elementary school students. So, you know, it would be easy for us to link that, because we already have the teachers in the building to do that, lift that work.
Commissioner Reed, though, in that area, I think the Wildwood Elementary Middle School is one of our new 21st century schools that's in that area. Rod, Rod is close, yes. Beachfield Elementary Middle is close to that area. And I think Thomas Jefferson is-
It's a long walk, though. So, it's a long walk to Beachfield to Thomas Jefferson. We do hold for those eighth grade, those kids that are leaving those middle schools and going to high school, we do like career days for them, so they come over. So, we'll have like Thomas Jefferson at GSA, and it's a long walk. We always have to get buses to get those kids to us. So, that's Thomas Jefferson, Beachfield are the two schools that-
Commissioner Frank?
I could be wrong about this. Do you have any preliminary feedback from the Charter Advisory Board or the committee?
Yes, they asked us about distributive leadership, and also how explicitly the academic programming would look. So, we broke, so we met and broke out what the academic programming might look like, and what the initiatives are for all of the pre-K to five grades, so that we could see that it's much different from what's happening with our 612 right now, but still connected to the mission and vision.
So, we have to, Allison, help me with protocol here. Is it acceptable for us to see their response, or does-
So, this is a new process, so we're all learning it, but, so they've gotten impact from, oh, to that, so the responses to that?
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for taking the time. Our next, Angela's going to come and talk to us about New Song Academy?
Yeah. So, the next set of schools are existing schools, and they're applying for governance changes. So, the first to come up is going to be New Song Academy. So, they're in the Sandtown Winchester neighborhood. They serve students in grades K through eight. And so, they're a remaining new school initiative school. So, New School Initiative Schools was our first foray into operator schools. It predates charter law in Baltimore City. It predates everything. It was our first, so they've been the law, so they, so they're applying to convert and to become a charter.
Correct that stadium school. That was the first.
That was the very first one.
Anyway, never mind. This is not a history lesson, whatever.
Many of our oldest charters were, started off as new school initiative schools, and they converted it when the law first changed. Part of what they're asking to is also to do- Part of what they're asking to is also to do, um, a slight expansion of their size, so you see that, um, at capacity being three-sixty. They wanna maintain their small-school model, but part of it is an expansion. So, I just wanna make sure you have that context, and I'm gonna bring them up.
Nice to see you, Mark. There you go.
All right. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name's Mark Carter. I'm the executive director of New Song Community Learning Center. To my immediate, uh, left is Lisa Brown, the principal of the academy. This has been twenty-nine years in the making. The last two years have been an incredible journey. It's an exciting moment to be with you this evening. This charter application essentially is the promissory note realized in Sandtown Winchester. An opportunity to do things that, uh, our founders have expected, uh, us to do over the years, to create a healing-centered organization focusing on children, uh, in a part of the city that, um, has often been, uh, forgotten and marginalized. We focus on superior expectations for academic performance. We also focus on social-emotional learning. We care about our children through restorative practice, and most importantly, we care about them through love. And this is an opportunity to tell you that story, and to tell you why we are excited to become a charter school.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Brown, principal of New Song Academy. We are truly excited about this opportunity, if allowed to expand. Um, currently, we serve a hundred and sixty-six students in the Sandtown Winchester community from pre-K to eight. Um, we are a trauma-informed center. Um, we've been focusing a lot on social-emotional learning. We are castle site for the district. Um, one of the biggest challenges that we've seen is, year to year, when our parents come, and we don't have the space to take the children on. So, this is one of the reasons why we're looking to be able to expand. Currently, our academic program, we focus on literacy, um, math. All of our students have, um, intervention supports available with our teaching support staff through our after-school programming. Um, our students are offered the arts programming through the day. Um, we are excited. We just were designated as a gifted and advanced learning site. Um, the school year, Dennis Jutris, has been helping us with that. In addition, uh, we've been able to carry over a lot of our academic supports, as I mentioned earlier, in our after-school program. Um, one of the biggest factors that we focus on in our community is making sure that we are developing leaders, um, whether that be through our parent leadership training. Um, we look forward to having a parent university. Um, with our student leadership training, currently, we have, um, a cross-age school buddy program, where our middle-school scholars are trained how to lead their younger students, and mi- mindfulness training. We also have, um, leadership training for our teachers, where they have opportunities to go out and help other school sites in the community and each other through our professional development opportunities.
We think that this is a great opportunity for New Song. My name is Vicky Schultz, and I'm chair of the board for New Song Community Learning Center. And the board made this decision because we felt we were at a prime moment. This was a moment, we've been a small school, we've, we've benefited from a small-school subsidy that the district has provided us to remain that. That's been a critical piece for our school in growing our community and the roots in Sandtown Winchester for these years. But we see that there's now an opportunity to expand our, our vision and our mission for the school. We think that this is the way forward for us, for sustainability, and also to serve the needs of the community better. Right now, we have a lot of partners that are interested in working with us. We see some of them listed in the, uh, handout that you have, as well as in the application. However, we're thwarted, in many respects, in being able to do more for the community. We've heard from our parents, we've heard from our students, what they want from us, and we've found that the constraints of our beautiful building is, um, constraining our programming and what we can do with them. And we think we are a mature operator. We've been in, uh, operation for quite some time. We think we've performed well in the school system, and our students have done well. They've gone on to become teachers, they've come back, they've mentored this generation of students. We've hired them for leadership positions within the school. And we think this is an opportunity to create that model, to expand that vision. And we believe we have the population ready and eager to join the New Song community.
Okay. Uh, we'll start with Commissioner Richardson. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, I do have a question. I just read here that as a charter, you would have to be able to cover all of your costs. As a new initiative school, there are some, for lack of a better word, subsidies that are put in. Are you, would the, would the added seats allow for you to do that? Or what's the financial strategy to get you to that place?
Critical to our sustainability, our financial sustainability, is definitely growth. So, we see that as a critical part of this. If we were to forego, go from our current structure, that has, again, the small-school subsidy, which has been variable, quite frankly, over the years, um, we would move to, uh, expand the number, and that would cover much of our costs. We also have some key partnerships. We're looking at, um, Gilmore Elementary as a potential place to expand. Um, we know that the school system has surplus that building. Uh, we are gonna begin negotiations and, and discussions with the community to see as a possibility, as another school facility. But we think those numbers, if we increase our numbers, that we'll be able to account for the loss of some of the s- small-school subsidy that the system has provided these years.
Also, part, I'm sorry. Part of the reason we're here is that we have a clarion call from the community to expand our numbers. We have a waiting list of children and families who are interested in becoming a part of New Song, and we can't expand in the building that we are at currently.
Commissioner Frank?
Yeah, understanding that park scores are not everything, and there's lots of ways to, to evaluate success, as you, as you guys have performed well. But I, I, I am curious, looking at park scores, you guys, there are some grades that are far in excess of state, um, averages, and then in other cases, there's no one who is, is performing. So, can you speak to that? It doesn't even look like it's in the early grades versus later grades. It's some, some are really great, some are not performing in terms of any, anyone performing at the proficient level.
Yes. So, we know one of the challenges that we've had is with our math scores on park. Um, and looking at that across the grade levels, we've moved to, like, an intervention model that we mentioned earlier, uh, with an RTI, where we tier our students. Um, our teachers look at all the data, the state data, along with the assessment data, and those groups switch daily, weekly. Um, Mark and I are able to look at the data, along with the teachers, during collaborative planning. That speaks to, like I said earlier, a lot of the after-school programming that we're offering those students with targeted support. Uh, we have math tutors in the building throughout the week, along with literacy tutors. And a lot of our community partners are on-site now, helping us as well. Um, we have reading buddies that come with, from Charlestown, um, Charlestown Retirement Center, along with our Towson Partners, um, who are helping us with our small groups throughout the day. So, we're hopeful that our scores will increase this year.
So, were these modifications interventions from last year, after last year's scores you?
Yes, we put them in place this year to support that, and we're looking forward to our scores hopefully increasing this year. Um, and we are proud that, in our community, we were one of the only schools that got a three-score rating last year, too. So, we're hopeful that those scores will continue to increase.
Thank you.
Also, uh, Vicky mentioned it, and I'm gonna tie this into what, uh, Lisa just said. We've identified students who need resource and support. We have an after-school program. We have decided, uh, and through Lisa's suggestion, to hire some of our former graduates to be tutors of our current students. And then, we're focusing on, uh, we're literally targeting those students who need the most, and figuring out how to bring people back to the school who have enjoyed success, not only at New Song, but have gone on to some of the, um, the best public schools in the city, and then have come back to help us. And so, we're really sort of trying to figure out, uh, how to target those students. There's also another dynamic that I think is worth, uh, considering. Uh, over the history of New Song, uh, there's been some shifts in terms of, uh, we used to have students who started out with us in pre-K and went through the entire, uh, uh, eight grades. And now, we have students entering at different points, who don't always come with the same strengths that the students who have been with us since the outset have grown. So, we're figuring out how to, uh, support those students who transfer into our school, and then how to also support, uh, parents, and by extension, others who are involved in their lives. Because n- one of the, one of the hallmarks of New Song is sort of creating this culture in which everyone is involved in a student's life. And so, we are figuring that out and responding to the students who have those most critical needs.
Commissioner Chinia?
I, I'm gonna ask a really basic question, and perhaps I'm just a little confu- confused, too, in terms of, um, what specifically will you gain by moving from new initiative to charter? What I'm hearing most is the ability to expand in terms of more space to, for a larger population. Is there more than that, or am I missing, am I?
Besides serving the community, a greater, meeting a greater need, which is true.
But I mean, could you expand without becoming, without moving to charter? That, that, that's, I guess that's the question that I'm asking. Cause you're doing lots of innovative things now.
We are.
So, I just don't see the, yeah.
We are. I think it has to do with our sustainability, quite frankly, as well. We need to grow. As you know, there's a certain level at which a school becomes more, uh, there's economies of scale efficiencies, if you will, for staffing. For example, you know, we have a social worker one day a week, we don't have an assistant principal. There are certain things that we believe having a larger school will help serve the needs of our students better. Plus, sustainability, I think, as a charter, we are not allowed, we don't have grant opportunities that are available for other charter schools. We can't apply for those as a new school initiative. We're kind of in, in between and betwixt two different statuses. We're not a traditional school, and we're not a charter school, so we cannot avail ourselves of those other funding streams, too. So, that's caused some difficulties as well. And we think that moving to charter makes sense from a governance perspective. We've looked at it quite closely. We had a, an ad hoc committee for the board, um, that engaged and looked at the various different models, and we think this is the way for sustainability and for the future of New Song, is that we need to both go to charter and to expand the school to remain, um, viable.
So, I guess the second part of my question is, if, if the, if the possibility of expanding is not, should not occur, with the, the possibility you've given in terms of Gilmore, you would still be able to do some of what you want, become in a charter in your current location? Or how would that impact it?
Well, I think frankly, if we were not able to expand, uh, and grow the school as a charter, uh, we would have to reconsider and possibly withdraw over, over the time. You know, we understand, because that is a concern of ours, to remain without the small-school subsidy. As you know, we've done the, done the math, and we understand that foregoing that would be difficult, uh, at our current population number, and our, our certain size now. So, that is, that's a factor. So, the two are really intertwined in our planning.
Mm-hmm. Uh, do you have a current waiting list for folks who, who, and, and what, what's that number like right now?
We have about a hundred and seventy students, uh, on our waiting list, and we also have, um, we've looked at the data, it's in the application, that shows there are students, about four hundred students, who are, live in Sandtown, but go to other schools around the city that might consider. Plus, we know that there's been some closures of other charters in the area, Roots and Branches. Some of the students from Monarch Academy live in Sandtown Winchester. We think that we would provide choice for those families, um, if, uh, if we were able to res- expand, and that they might choose to come to us. So, we believe there's adequate demand for more seats at New Song.
Sorry. Kind of a basic facilities question. What's gonna happen to the current building?
We have, we have plans for that as well, and Mark, you know, you might wanna continue this, but we, we believe that one of our strengths is early childhood, as well as parent support. And we believe that that school, the school, the facility we have now, would be a great center. When, and, for example, we were talking to the district about expanding our early, early childhood offerings, but we just, we really just don't have the space right now.
But how will you, how will you pay for that?
Through partnerships, and do you wanna, do, through partnerships that we've discussed, we have a, a couple of ideas. We have some grant funding as well, that we're seeking for those partnerships, as well as looking at the early childhood model. So, we're doing that kind of modeling, too. I think we're stymied in answering, um, your more specific questions, because we have not had the discussions yet with the city regarding the costs, um, for that facility. So, I'm.
Fair enough.
I don't know if this is, uh, part of what was behind the question, but the current building that we're in, Fifteen Thirty Pressman, we own it outright, there's no mortgage. Uh, we, if we had different space, there are innumerable, uh, opportunities before us, but we can't do it. We can't do it simply because we run a school, uh, longer days, uh, well into, uh, a longer year. We're running through the end of July. There are people who want to use our building in support of the early childhood, um, educational objectives that Vicky just mentioned, and Lisa has had some other ideas about the ways in which Fifteen Thirty really does become the essence of a, a, a community center and an early childhood center.
And we do have another building as well, uh, that we own across the street. It's another asset that we could leverage, um, and we've considered that as a board. In fact, we looked at that as a possibility for expansion, but it's an old building, and, uh, the cost to ex, one, it wouldn't give us sufficient space to expand much, and the cost to make it compliant are prohibitive.
Yeah, I remember when that was gonna be the high school.
That was gonna be the high school, that's right. That was the original one.
Other, I know, I, I'm really dating myself in this presentation. Other, other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and finally, we have, um, Rosemont Elementary Middle School. Um, it's also, um, located in West Baltimore. Um, it's a pre-K-eight charter school. It's currently operating, operated by Coppin State, um, University. Um, that contract is ending, so we have another, um, group called Flight Twenty-Two, um, that is applying to take over that contract. And so, that's, uh, that's what's before you. So, I'm gonna go ahead and call, um, the group up.
Welcome. We, um, from the, the tech crew, uh, we just went dark back there? Could we have our? We're not gonna? There we go, thanks. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening to the Board of Commissioners. There we go. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. Um, I also would like to say thank you to our support. Um, Rosemont Elementary, we have our principal here. We have members of our board, and I will introduce them, uh, very shortly. And all of, uh, members of the Rosemont community in the back, thank you so much for supporting us. So, Flight Twenty-Two Foundation was founded in two thousand and ten by Rudy Gay, who was a native of Baltimore, a professional athlete. He currently plays for the San Antonio Spurs. And he cre- he founded it with his family. And, uh, we're. And we're just so excited that he has the heart for Baltimore. My name is Yasmin Draper. I am the Executive Director of Flight Two, Flight 22 Foundation. And to my right.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. My name is Tim Wolfe. I'm a professor of sociology and human services at Mount St. Mary's University in Emitsburg. And we are a key partner with Rosemont. We run a summer camp that helps with, helps prepare the students for college readiness.
Good evening. My name is John Chapman. I'm one of the co-founders and President of Everfy. We're an education technology company that partners with Flight 22 on an entrepreneurship curriculum we've done over the last year and excited to hopefully bring that further to Rosemont as we go forward.
And good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Yihuan from Coppin State University. I, I'm a professor, manage a collection of portfolio of grant-based academic innovation and community transformation initiatives funded by state, federal and private agencies. During the past five years, I have the great pleasure of collaborating with Principal Wheeler, engage in high-tech, high-touch and high-impact innovations. And I also have the pleasure of observing their commitment to community empowerment through education. So I'm so pleased to be here and thank you for the opportunity for the new partnership to form.
Flight 22 Foundation provides a platform for students to have opportunities that they otherwise would not. We are interested in being an oversight for Rosemont to extend their arms and being a platform or to be a institution of innovation. We are looking at our plan of innovation being around entrepreneurship in which Everfy provides for us. Why are we doing this? What is our why? Our why is because inner-city students, students of low income, do not have opportunities to learn about business. They do not have opportunities for innovation. Communities like Rosemont do not have big businesses in their community. So what we're doing is we're bringing it to the school. In 2010, Rudy was very, very, very adamant about making sure that we are offering opportunities to students that otherwise would not have it. Rosemont has been a very successful school. They were awarded four times, contract renewals, five years, my apologies, very successful. We want to extend their arms. We want to be able to provide those opportunities that they, they would not, they did not have an opportunity to with the deficits in their budget. We have a lot of great support behind us to give Rosemont those opportunities for students to be in their flow, to learn about entrepreneurship, to learn about STEM. Anything else that you want to add?
Well, good evening. My name is Dewayne Wheeler and I'm the proud principal at Rosemont Elementary Middle School. And Dr. Santalisa, thank you very much for your support during my dissertation period this summer. Appreciate it that. I graduated in May, so thank you.
And now I can say congratulations in person, Doctor.
Y'all can have an extra 20 seconds for that.
Okay. I, I have been with the Rosemont community for the past 12 years and my passion for the Rosemont community is that it's been about the relationships that we have established with our families. I know lots of times we always focus on the academics, but often we often forget about the relationships. And being the school leader, I have had opportunity to work with some amazing families, families that are sending us the very best that they have, but sometimes their circumstances sometimes hinder them, hinders them from being the best that they can be. And that's where the school comes in. The school steps in to be that safe haven. It's there to be a pillar in the community and to shift the trajectory for our young people. I was able to even reach back today to talk to one of our former students, a graduate of 2008 from Rosemont. He is here today because he's starting his own business in the community and giving back to the community. We've worked with Coppin State University for almost 20 years and we had the partnership where our students were able to move from Rosemont to Coppin Academy to Coppin State University. Now, we're giving students even a greater opportunity to extend their, their experiences through not just Coppin State University, but Morgan State University, Mount St. Mary's. And they're having opportunities that they would otherwise not have had we not had these type of partnerships. It was really a surprise when we got the information that we would not be partnering with Coppin State, but we were so glad that Flight 22 was able to come in and provide that additional support that we needed. They're coming with a plan of action and our staff is extremely excited about that, that opportunity where our students will be able to be exposed to new learning and new opportunities.
Thank you. I want to start the questioning on this one and I'm going to direct this to the principal. Thank you for your presentation. Very, very helpful and it's nice to see so many partners here. So this was originally a conversion. So Rosemont existed before, exists now with Coppin as the operator, so Coppin doesn't want to be the operator anymore. You're the principal of a school that's doing pretty well and you have, the people are saying they want to be your partner. Why do you need to be a, that was good? Now we'll just be a rig, a traditional school again. The Flight 22 can be your partner, the entrepreneurship program can be your partner, Morgan can be your partner, Coppin can be your, all the people that want to be partners can be partners. I, I'm really missing the, the nugget here of why you need to be a charter school anymore. You don't, you're the principal of a school that's doing well? I'm, I'm really missing it.
I think when we think about charter, charter gives us flexibility. It gives us opportunities where we can be innovative with different initiatives and different ideas.
So that's, that's, I actually knew you were going to go there. That's, that's, I've asked this, when I used to be on the advisory board and would ask this question in interviews, every time I would ask that question, that was exactly the same, and so it's, I, I think it's true.
Uh huh.
So could you just, I'm not calling you, I'm not saying it's not true.
Oh, absolutely.
I hear you.
Yes.
Can you just give me an example of something that you want to do or that you're doing now as a charter? Like an innovation, a special initiative, something that you're doing now that you really would hate to not be able to do if you weren't a charter anymore? Because I, after all these years, I've been involved in the charter new school stuff since 1997. I've yet to hear a really great example of something that a traditional school wants to do that they will be forbidden from doing if they're a charter. So now that you've been both, tell me, what's that thing that you just don't want to give up? What'd she say?
They said finances.
So if that's the answer, because I, God's honest truth, I actually think that's the answer. So, so, and I really want to know, like specifically, what is the specific thing, you don't have to give me a list, just a thing that you're doing right now that you're afraid you're not going to be allowed to do anymore?
I, I think for, for me, it is the.
I've been asking this question for years.
The opportunities that our students are having right now to go outside of the community.
Specifically?
Right, for, with the university, for example, the university at Mount St. Mary's.
And so you're convinced that Mount St. Mary's, if you're, if you're just a regular, traditional Rosemont Elementary School and you call Mount St. Mary's and say, "We'd like to come over," they're going to say no because you're not a charter school?
No, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, but I think parents have, parents have given us a, a different level of trust when, when you say, when they say.
But it's still you.
I, I.
You're the same guy.
I, I, I know, I am.
I'm not trying to, you know, seriously, I am not trying to be antagonistic. I have been asking this, I remember when Mount Washington wanted to convert. I tried everything to get this answer. They actually didn't convert and they're, they're doing whatever they want to do up in Mount Wa, I mean, like, they're doing their thing up in Mount Washington. They got two buildings, they finally got the, I fundamentally don't get what you think you can't do. If you want to be a partner with Mount St. Mary's, call them up, be a partner. The lady from Coppin, high-touch, high-help, come, come on down. They don't want to be a, a operator anymore, but I didn't hear her say she was going anywhere. I, I don't, and this feels bad because I feel like I'm, I'm taking out, what's 1997 to 2019, 32 years? I don't know, how many years is that? It's a lot of years, 22. I was an engineer, I'm embarrassed to admit that right now. For 22 years, I really haven't been able to understand this, for the conversions. I get the whole, I, I get the Patterson Park Public Charter School story, I've seen that, I know where it came from, but the conversions, I'm, I'm mystified.
Well, I, I came after they had become a charter.
But you're successful now.
Well, you know, I think that they came from training, the training that I received from the former Executive Director who had, who had retired. And when she, when she left the school in, in my care, she left very, very big shoes to fill, you know? So it was then for me to step in and to build those relationships with the families and the communities, to extend the partnerships beyond Coppin State University. And we were able to leverage more opportunities for our students. And so I, I think now with the whole notion around the innovate, innovative piece around Flight 22, they're bringing a program where our students will be able to have mentors from other community partners that can come in and work with them individually.
So Flight 22, you wouldn't come in if they were in a charter? Like you wouldn't want to be involved with the students in that school if they were in a charter?
Sure.
That's what I thought. I, I'm, seriously, I, I'm not, I'm going to let, I'm going to let it go because I should read the, the, I, I sent a text finding out when we're going to be able to read the full application, so I was informed two minutes ago that these are all going to be fully uploaded, so I will have a chance to read it because I'm, this is unfair and I don't want to push too much more because I want to read the whole application and, and see. But when we, next time we come back and talk about this, be prepared to tell me the specific things that you are going to be forbidden from doing if you're not a charter. Allison, you're trying to answer my question or comment on this or something?
I just, I just wanted to make a comment, having operated conversion charter schools before. I mean, I think part of the challenges, part of this is on us, frankly. This is why getting the charter funding formula right is so important. If the formula was right, if it was equitable to the way we fund traditional schools, which we've pointed out many times in public session how it is not, there wouldn't, the question you're asking, wouldn't, wouldn't, there wouldn't be a question and it wouldn't be an issue. And if you have schools like, I mean, what Mark Martin is doing with 100% project schools, we could fund those schools as charter schools and it wouldn't have a financial impact on the district if we got the funding formula right. We should be able to fund schools either way and it would have no impact on the district.
Fair enough on that, but it's on us for.
Right now it does.
It's on us for another reason. It's on us for another reason. And this is why I'm not picking on you. I really want to know this because the, there's certain, if you had said, "We're using a curriculum that's different than the city's curriculum," that would be, that would be one thing because that is a flexibility that you would have, okay? That, I didn't hear you say that, so I, maybe that's true. Like I said, I have to read the material. I haven't boned up on charter, Rosemont in a, in a while. But the other thing that's on us is this business about traditional schools not having the flexibility to do some things and try some things. I, I, I think there's, it goes both ways. I agree with you on everything you just said about the money. And we're going to, ultimately, I'm confident that'll be sorted out. I, it's maybe not in my board lifetime, but it, it'll be sorted out. But there's this other business about traditional schools that want to convert and they're, and let's assume for a moment it's not just about the money because the, the principal has said flexibility, flexibility. And so I would, I would hope that when, when we have the next time to talk and, and respond to que, question and respond to questions, that we, you can be more specific about the kind of flexibilities you want because I, you're not alone. This has happened over the years with schools that are doing well, that are looking for some flexibility and there's something in the district that's holding them back and it's, the money stuff is complicated. I, that other stuff is less complicated, feels more bureaucratic to me.
But the other point I would say is that if you have a good operator and you're doing something very different with your school, with a conversion school, you have a different curriculum, you have different professional learning, you have a different approach to climate and you have an operator who is providing that support, it is different.
That's.
So we have a conversion schools who, that is very different. And Rosemont has done very well and frankly, it's a lot of credit to Principal Wheeler's because he hasn't had all that support.
That's my point.
And he's done it himself.
Allison, you're making my point. You're making my point.
But for an operator who does a lot of the support, and we have operators who do, they, they make a vital difference in a school when they are providing the professional learning, they're picking the curriculum, they're helping with the hiring of the teachers.
I was looking for that from here and I didn't hear that because he's doing it. He's doing it. Let me, I'm going to, Commissioner Frank?
Right. I, you know, what I think we need as a board is frankly, more discussion about what is the charter policy. For example, if we are going to begin talking about the difference between the 2% and whatever that number is as a factor in whether or not we support charters, then we have to have a public conversation about that. I, I think that that is a policy issue of the board that should, that should be a companion to a policy issue around charters. Because when we look at just the cost of charters, we're not looking at the benefits. To me, what is the cost? We keep hearing, Allison, you've said, it's been presented publicly, I'm sorry, I still don't know the number. What is the cost of a charter school to traditional schools? And then we can't stop there. What are the benefits? What, you just described highly functioning charter schools. Well, that's the benefit side. Does it keep students in the district? Does it, does it attract students to the district? Does that then get us $9,600 from the state, which we don't otherwise get? So I don't, I hope that this conversation about charters, which includes conversions and includes new ones and ones that should have been and have been closed down for lack of performance, I hope that we as a board can get away from strictly talk, we don't do this, I apologize, but there's a lot of conversation around the edges of what charter schools cost traditional schools. And I think we need to take it out from the dark. We need to be more transparent about what those costs are and we need to have a conversation about it.
And I, before Dr. Santalisa closes down this, no, no, you're, you're good. I just want to, you're, you're, you've struck a nerve here and it's not about you. Right?
They're like, yes, it is because we're the ones sitting.
No, it's a, it's the particular nuances of conversion charters, particularly one that has succeeded without some of the specific benefits that Allison referenced. That's why I wanted to get her away from the, the notion of the cost because I think there are some other critical issues that a conversion, it's why Commissioner Hassan, if I might, has asked a couple of times for some of the schools that want to do new schools, if they would be, still be interested if it was going to be a conversion. Because there are strengths that are brought to some struggling schools with an innovative conversion. And Flight 22 may be a highly innovative conversion. I haven't read the material, I'll say that for the last time. But you're a very interesting case here where you've got a principal who's done well and I, it's really trying to tease out what the, what the nuances are that you're, you're trying to get from a brand-new operator when you, you're kind of cooking right along. Commissioner Richardson?
Before Dr. Santalisa speaks, I just, I really want you to respond to Commissioner Kashani's question in writing. I felt like you were kind of put on the spot tonight, right?
Yeah, no, I think that.
And it's hard to think while you're like trying to answer a question right on the spot, but it's a really good question that if you could take a moment and think that through, what is missing if you became a traditional school, right? What would you need? What supports would you need from the district in order to operate as highly as you are right now, but would be a traditional school? I really would love to see the answer to that in writing. Thank you.
Commissioner Chinia?
All right, you can't leave yet, no. I want to go, I, I really would like to know a little bit more about Flight 22 in terms of, you've mentioned so far STEM and entrepreneur, I think that's what I, I sort of jot it down. But what is, what has been your experience? I, I know the founder and all that, but what has been your experience in terms of, of being an operator for charter school, if any?
We do not have any experience as an operator, however, myself, I'm a former principal, former district support lead. And currently, I am a leadership coach for school districts and district initiatives. So I do have a lot of experience in supporting oversight. We have a lot of experience on the board here, college professors. We have founders and presidents and CEOs of businesses. We have a lot of experience that we can bring to Rosemont, definitely. If you refer to our org chart, you can see where we are placing the supports. And I was going to speak to our four pillars. Looking at leadership growth and development, data analysis, student support and innovation, and professional learning. We are really big on network communities, making sure that we are looking at problems of practice, having, what's so great about Flight 22 and the board is that we bring different experiences, different perspectives. different experiences, different perspectives to problems. And I think a lot of times that's missing from school leadership is that we do not have a lot of experience coming to the school to look at a problem in a different way. People look at problems in their own way. Teachers look at problems in their own way, principals, community support. They see it in their own way. They only see one part of the problem. But when we bring it together, and we're looking at a problem together, then that's when we can really dig in and find solutions and create actions that will be implemented into the classroom. So, again, we, we have not been a operator of a school, but we do have a whole lot of experience in school leadership.
Okay. And then, I, from, from the portions that I've been reading, you're not, there's not a plan in terms of changing the, the academic plan for the school for this year. It's the, it's the piece that you're mentioning in terms of, of sort of, sort of the oversight and looking at the, the broader areas?
Yes. So, there are some changes that we will be making. We are looking at the instructional model right now at Rosemont. They do not have instructional support, so we will be building that out, developing coaching cycles. So, we will be allotting for instructional coaches, lead teachers. We have our coach here, Luke, who works with teachers around the innovation curriculum as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Bondimma?
I just want to add a little piece, um, listening to everybody, all the other commissioners, and just to hear, because you would need approval from most of us, at least. I think that what we need, like, it's already been said, and I need to say it, we need a whole lot more information about what's actually going on. I think it's very impressive that you have partners, but I didn't hear, and that's why I need to see more in writing about your academics and, and what's actually going on in the school, because partnership is beautiful, but partnership doesn't do what needs to be done. It's a piece of what the good stuff that should be happening. And so, as soon as you get the documents in, then we, all of us, we will read it, and we would take from that what you have to offer, because I'm trying to find out the difference between what you're going from and where you want to go to. I can't, I'm not getting it. And I see with your document, the documents that you have here, but I'm not really gaining too much from the documents. So, when you put it together, I'm sure you'll put it all in writing, and we can read from there.
If I can respond to that. Currently, Rosemont is in a deficit, so they were not able to implement those programs that they otherwise would have without supports. So, we are coming in to support that, whether it is the extended-day programs such as Saturday School, after-school programs. We're looking at the Entrepreneurship Program during the day, programs that they've planned to implement but have not. So, that is in our plan. Get a chance to, to look at that.
Commissioner, Commissioner Reed?
So, so you're talking, you said they're working from a deficit. So, what are you talking in terms of capitalization, say, over the next five years? How much money is Flight 22 going to put into the school?
We do project that there will be an increase in enrollment. So, we projected about adding 10 to 15 students every year. So, right now, the rent is a big deficit of $250,000. So, we are looking at increasing that possibly to $500,000 a year.
So, I, I reiterate, so how much money is Flight 22 going to put into the process over the next five years?
For the next five years, between $250,000 to $500,000 each year.
Per year?
Yes, per year.
Okay.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, and I appreciate your patience with our kind of debating this set of issues. I, like I said, it wasn't personal, but it is, it is something that we have to consider as we, as we think about the unique factors of this particular proposal, and I look forward to reviewing it. So, we appreciate your time. With that, the, we already adjourned the public meeting, so this is the conclusion of our work session, and we will see everybody at the June 11th board meeting.